I'd like to call to order the January eighth meeting of the Lake Stevens Planning Commission. You can all rise and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A quick roll call. Commissioner Doerr.
Here.
Commissioner Packard.
Here.
No, Commissioner Jennifer Davis, she was not able to attend. To have a motion to excuse her.
So moved.
Second. All right. Any opposed? Or all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much. Commissioner Morton.
Here.
Commissioner Matts.
Hello.
And Commissioner Huxford.
Yes.
All right. It's like everybody say for Commissioner Davis. Jennifer Davis said is. All right. You know, anybody, any guest business online?
Yeah.
All right. That brings us to the first action item. That's the approval of the November sixth. It's been a while since we've been together. The January, November sixth, twenty twenty four minutes. Anybody have any amendments? Any questions? No? We get a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes from November sixth.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any so moved? Brings us to the election of officers. Is anybody interested in the role as chair? All right. I'd be happy to serve another term. Commissioner Jennifer Davis. Did she make, she was not interested in the?
She was not interested in chair, but she was willing to serve as.
Willing to serve as vice chair. Yeah.
And to keep the Davises straight, I would also serve as chair if you want to not serve a second consecutive term.
Well, that would be, that would work for me. I know if things get really tricky going into, going into the spring.
And her schedule is as well.
Okay.
But anybody else who prefers to is certainly more than capable of doing so.
I was gonna nominate you anyway.
Uh, me? Oh, I thank you.
You ran the meeting when I was here last time.
It's.
Yeah, well, with that, if there, is there any discussion about Janice serving as the, the chair with Jennifer Davis serving as the vice chair?
I, I would second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any so moved? Brings us to the election of officers. Is anybody interested in the role as chair? All right. I'd be happy to serve another term. Commissioner Jennifer Davis. Did she make, she was not interested in the?
She was not interested in chair, but she was willing to serve as.
Willing to serve as vice chair. Yeah.
And to keep the Davises straight, I would also serve as chair if you want to not serve a second consecutive term.
Well, that would be, that would work for me. I know if things get really tricky going into, going into the spring.
And her schedule is as well.
Okay.
But anybody else who prefers to is certainly more than capable of doing so.
I was gonna nominate you anyway.
Uh, me? Oh, I thank you.
You ran the meeting when I was here last time.
It's.
Yeah, well, with that, if there, is there any discussion about Janice serving as the, the chair with Jennifer Davis serving as the vice chair?
I, I would second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any so moved? Congratulations, Commissioner Huxford.
Thank you. I appreciate your support and I just want everybody to sing the National Anthem with me. Moving forward, this whole pledge of allegiance thing has gotten old. So, yes, that was classic. That was a good moment.
All right. That brings us to.
Say before now, we should appoint to your vice chair as well. That wasn't in the.
Okay. All right. And so this would be a movement.
A motion.
A motion for Jennifer Davis to serve as, continue serving as vice chair.
To begin serving as vice chair.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay, that brings us to the twenty twenty five priorities for the joint meeting.
All right. Thank you, previous Chair Davis. So David Levitan, Senior Planner. So didn't have a whole lot planned out. Don't have a PowerPoint for this evening. Just wanted to kind of see where the discussion goes tonight. If you look in your packet at the staff report, try to provide information on a couple of topics and be responsive to commission feedback in the past. So a couple of items that we had heard. We had, if you look at attachment two for this item, we've developed a draft look ahead to try to plan out your next couple of meetings. So we wanted to be responsive to commissioners on that to try to let you know what's coming down the pipeline. I'm so happy to hear any thoughts on that. It's still very drafty. Still really need to fill in the dates and kind of wanted to incorporate some of the feedback that we received tonight. If we need to juggle any of the dates, shift some of the priorities. Wanted to be responsive to, you know, kind of what is driving the schedule. We presented, Russ presented the draft twenty twenty five long range planning work plan back in November. That's gonna be a large part of the discussion on January twenty first with the joint meeting with the city council. So wanted to kind of get another bite at the apple on that one. If there are topic areas, you know, that we'd like to shift around. Wanted to try to clarify which topics really kind of have statutory deadlines. So specifically within the staff report, we had mentioned that the update to the critical areas ordinance needs to be completed by December thirty first. We currently have an interim ordinance for our Senate Bill fifty two ninety compliance, which is basically the review timelines for different types of land use applications and building permits. So that's something that we have until December eleventh, so a year from the effective date of the current interim ordinance. But we would like to do that work sooner rather than later, but that's also another statutory timeline that we need to abide by. The process code is kind of tied in with the, with the interim ordinance. So that's something why we have prioritized that one. That's kind of been hanging out there on your work plan for the last couple. It was on the twenty twenty three one and also on the twenty twenty four. Twenty twenty four was obviously dominated by the comp plan. But we do want to get back to that and just provide, just to kind of, to modernize the code, to really make it a lot easier to find information on things like review types, review process, appeals. It's kind of all over the place right now. So that's really a priority for staff right now, but wanted to get any, get any feedback from the planning commission on that. And then just in advance of that January twenty first meeting, we appreciate the, the feedback from commissioners to the survey that we had circulated last week. Appreciate you getting to that so quickly. I wanted to get that out the week before. But got some really good feedback on that. That's included within attachment one of, of the packet tonight for this item. So really, a lot of it is kind of what we had heard in the past was that commissioners wanted to have a more substantive discussion with the city council, that it wasn't just kind of everybody patting each other on the back. Really wanted to incorporate, you know, your work plan and your, the work products that you did last year. Kind of what we learned, what we'd like to improve on, and really that be a focus of the meeting, the joint meeting with the city council. So I think long story short, there's a lot of things that are all interrelated, but happy to kind of start in any particular place, be responsive to planning commissioner comments. And happy for Russ or for Christie to weigh in as well.
So can I ask a question? What is the purpose of the joint meeting? What's the objective?
In the past, when we started doing that, it was really about the annual work plan.
Okay.
And just to make sure that there was understanding between both bodies on sort of what your objectives will be for that year. I think it's morphed since then to more of the congratulatory session that's been the last few years. And I will say that we have definitely tried over the years to facilitate conversation, but usually you've already worked or looked at your work program. The council's already looked at the work program and there's really not any further discussion at that point. So really, it's just to bring the two boards together. It's an opportunity for the council again to also recognize that the planning commission or the work that you've done. So if we're able to, in specific type of agenda, but I understand of the respect for everyone's busy schedules, that you do want it to be pertinent and meaningful, which is really the impetus to put out this survey to you to sort of collectively hear what you're thinking about. And those could be a few talking points to sort of help facilitate the conversation where we find some, some commonalities. So.
Okay. But so it's not, I mean, it could be a, a working session. I mean, right, we, we have a plan defined for what we want to talk about already. They have to some degree, a plan already. They have their retreat coming up that they're gonna further define things. But I mean, this meeting is not going to be saying, hey, what things do you guys think are interesting? Well, these are the things we think are interesting. So that, I guess, yeah, where do we actually work together? What is the conversation outside of this is our plan? This is your plan. Sounds good.
Well, and, and that's the difference in the, the government. The
Yeah.
Planning Commission is an advisory body.
Totally understand.
Doing the hard work.
Yeah.
And then council reviews and reacts to the work that you do. You know, sometimes, as was pointed out, they may not entirely agree with some of the final conclusions. And they, they take their own counsel, but they do look at your work. So that's really the, the division of labor is that you are the advisory body and they are the regulatory body that actually then passes it through ordinance and.
Commissioner Huxford, in your years of doing this, have you had engagements with them in a meeting like this that have been productive?
Yes and no. So it used to be more conversational. There have been council members that have forgotten that conversation when it comes to discussion and have accused us of putting something in front of them that wasn't in those discussions. So I share your feeling in that if we're gonna be coming to a meeting, that it be, that something come of it. And I actually was actually drilling back from what you're saying to not have it be a work session, but to have it be more of a logistical lineup of how we're gonna have communication liaison between us and city council. Feedback from city council in our meetings where appropriate, representation in city council meetings to our discussion where appropriate. And yes, we are advisory, but I think that we can work on how the two bodies marry together better in that we know where our recommendations have gone and what has been done with those. And they know how we came to the recommendations that we came to. And I put in my notes, and like I say, I'm pretty transparent. You can see exactly who's me. But I put in my notes that we used to have dialogue in here. And I sit in city council meetings now, and I'm not hearing that same flow between the two bodies that it used to, that used to happen. So I would like to, during this meeting, if it's appropriate to, to speak now, to my request, is that we sort of redefine the entity that we have, the liaison that we have here, and the role of that person, and then the information that goes to city council and how that information is, is discerned, whether it be through our liaison or through staff. Or in some cases, if it's appropriate from, directly from one of us. But I think that things are getting lost in the details sometimes. And the public is suffering from that. I think that there's a breakdown a little bit.
So I appreciate that comment. Two things. I would say our current liaison does a very good job during the council updates to provide pretty intricate details on the planning commission meeting. So I do think that that message is being carried from your liaison. I also would say that staff carries your recommendations forward in our staff reports. We always go back to the recommendations of the planning commission. As far as your liaison's role here, that is truly their role. They are almost ex officio, if you are. They are here to observe the goings on and to report back to council. We try to bring back to the planning commission then, when the actions are taken by council, you know, what their decisions are. So I believe that flow of information comes back. But I do think it's not inappropriate if the chair or vice chair, if there are particularly contentious or items that you've put a great deal of work and attention into. It doesn't have to be contentious. It could be any large project. I don't think it's inappropriate that you come on behalf of the planning commission and directly share your observations and feelings with the council. That was not inappropriate at all. But there is still, as I sort of started off, there is a division between the roles of each body of, of the government to make.
It just appears to me, and it might be my, my, you know, personal feelings, but it appeared to me that there was more collusion before, that, not collusion, that's a bad word, but there was more collaboration.
Let's, let's strike that.
And I think that that's where we saw the breakdown in the comp plan discussion with the public. One, they don't understand the process. Two, they don't understand the legislation that we're all held to, which can be all of us universally helping to educate, get into people early, get, you know, quell some of this, the rumors that were going on. But, but then we also need to have the information flow. Where is this process? Where is it happening with sidewalks? Where is it happening with what's going on in the roundabout here in the, in the town square? Where, where is ninety first happening right now? Because those are the questions that keep coming back, at least to me.
So you would like us to bring you information on capital projects?
Yes.
Which would be, I guess.
Yes.
I'm not saying we can't do that, but it's also, again, a little bit outside of your legislative.
Absolutely.
Your, your role, but we can definitely try to bring you that type of information if that's helping with, you know, questions.
I would think that that would be helpful. And I think that if anybody else is receiving the phone calls that I receive, that that would be helpful in having to answer any questions that comes that might quell some of the concerns that we saw in this past year.
And I would, I would second that. Most questions that I'll get from anyone or discussions are about capital projects. You know, what's happening downtown, the, the work on twentieth street that went, I know, much longer, shut down much longer than it was anticipated. The work that's come through here, I don't think anybody knew that that was going to happen until it was just, the road was just shut down. So yeah, just to make sure, so that we can better be that voice out in the community to be able to, you know, just to to relay the information and.
Yeah. We can, we can try. I will say, we don't always even know. We don't, we're not privy to the start dates of projects like this till the yellow steel shows up like all of you, but we can at least give you what the list of projects are and sort of anticipated timelines.
I do know from coordination with Public Works, Kristi Schmidt, Planning Manager, I know, work, work on AI, right? So I do know from working and coordinating with Public Works just over the past month, they have, and they are making a huge effort for twenty twenty five to have better public outreach with the community. So I would encourage, if you do get people questions, have them go to the Capitol page at the city's webpage, go there. And then also, I think it was the December tenth or the seventeenth meeting, Public Works came in, I think it was the seventeenth. They did a great overview for the projects for twenty twenty five. So I would highly recommend listening to that one, or maybe even asking for a copy of the PowerPoint, because it was very informative, even for me as a staff person.
And they do that about quarterly, or at least twice a year where they give their capital project updates. So.
General public doesn't realize it until it's in their backyard.
No.
Till the roads closed. Essentially.
So I'm interested in, in our discussion with the city council to, to talk more about things that are, that are within our realm here. Specifically, expansion of the UGA. And we've been on a about twenty year project in the city of expanding the city boundaries into the existing UGA. And we're basically done. And so at this point, the city is continuing to grow despite the boundaries being set. Wow, go figure. And, and so I know that the city has, has put out a request to the county to expand the UGA. And that was, those were all turned down. And they were very reasonable. I've told you in the past, this, you know, the very reasonable request. And most of them weren't even expanding to the north and east. We're trying to expand west toward the, the, toward Everett. And yet it was turned down. So I, I would like to see the city to continue attempting to expand that UGA, because we've done everything that the county and state has asked us to do in meeting our growth targets and creating the, the, the zoning and, and changes and, and development changes that, that we need to do to meet their, their goals that they have set for us. And so in order to relieve the pressure that they have imposed on us, it's very reasonable for us to be able to grow our, our boundaries out into the urban or the rural areas. So I, I think that's something I'd like to discuss with the city council.
And I know that the city council, or I won't speak for all of the city council, but there are several city council members that share that opinion. And I'm sure they will direct us when the next opportunity comes to, you know, request those expansions again. But we're five years out at this point, and we would start the process in what, two years?
Oh, it's that far out?
Yeah. So just, just to provide context, the UGA expansion, I started in June, June of twenty twenty, and the UGA expansion was one of the first projects that I worked on as far as our proposals. And the it was just now, basically, it's acted, the legislative action by the county councils through the comp, through the twenty twenty four comp plan. So it essentially was four years later when it was finally, you know, ruled upon.
Oh, so it's what, once every five years that they even consider UGA expansion?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
So we're a couple of years out before even starting another request.
That's, yes. So Bruce, I am, I, I think your idea is good. I'm just curious what that actually looks like in that meeting, right? Hey, we think we should do this. And they're gonna say, yeah, we agree. We've been trying. County says no. I mean, yeah. So I'm just curious what that conversation actually looks like.
Well, we need to find out why they said no and address those issues. And, and we got, apparently we have some time to address those issues and, and find out what we need to do.
And I agree with that. I'm just wondering if that forum is the right forum versus we just need the city to come, you know, the city staff to come share that with us at a separate time.
I think the benefit of having everyone in the room is that it short circuits those, those conversations that take, oh, a couple of weeks here and a couple of weeks there. If everyone's in the room, we can get so much more accomplished in just a few minutes of going back and forth and discussing.
Sure.
Than messages being passed between organizations.
Okay. And, and yours too, Janice. I guess I'm not sure what actionable. So you ask, we ask for updates on things like capital projects, but is your, your vision, I guess, if you're gonna approach that meeting next week and start off as the new chair, right? What is your question? Is it more on, hey, how do we work together? Do we put the ball in their court? To respond to something on the fly? You know, do we need to prep them in advance with, these are the things that we're concerned about? Please think about them in advance and come prepared to discuss. Are you going to propose a handful of things that you would like to see done differently? So I like where you're going. I'm just curious how it shakes out and actually happens in the meeting.
I, I love your questions. So my hope is that we do have a list. And that we do say, what is the communication going to be like? Is our liaison going to stay the same person? And what is that liaison feeding back to you? We would like, at least I would like more feedback here, whether it is from staff or that we have something prepared. I would like to make myself and, and any of you available if needed to come into a city council meeting to actually talk to the discussion and the behind the scenes. I would go farther to say as a planning commission, again, we don't influence this, well, we don't vote on these, but we influence what is being passed financially down to the citizens of the, of the community here. And there have been a lot of things that have been passed recently, and we're going to be asked to deal with other things that have the potential of having a dollar and cents amount. And then it comes down to what I get asked about. The project up on South Lake Stevens Road, and I always forget, a lank, the lank project that was up there, the ten acres that was sold that is now gonna be developed into townhomes, that bypassed us. And I got so many phone calls on why that bypassed us. And honestly, it took me about three, four, five questions to figure out why it didn't come through planning commission. It goes straight to a council vote. So these are things that, as a council, I keep pointing at you. And I'm, I'm, I'm just pointing at you.
Did you know that he was just made the council president as of yesterday?
I, I am pointing, I am pointing at you as your new chair of your planning commission, simply to say that if council is having something brought before them that they know has bypassed planning commission, it, I, I just see it as a common courtesy that we be updated that this is going on, because unless you're in that meeting, you wouldn't know until someone calls you and says, how did you vote on that? So I'm, I'm a dialogue.
Here. That's a quasi judicial land use action that does not go to the planning commission. That goes to the hearing examiner, who is the recommending body and then to council. So again, there are just separations in the duties and it's, I will say hard, would be hard for my staff, not impossible, but we do over a thousand building permits and several hundred land use permits every year. And those are available on our website. So really, it's, we can train you on where to give people the power to find out that information, but I don't think it's up to my staff to bring every project action.
I, I, I'm not asking for every project for us. I'm not asking for every project, but there are some that get higher visibility than others.
Maybe there's a threshold that we could have.
Again, that makes me really nervous just from a process point of view that, again, we can provide the education on how to get people that information. But again, I, I get nervous when we start mixing up roles and responsibilities of the process.
Then, then maybe.
Common courtesy that we be updated that this is going on. Because unless you're in that meeting, you wouldn't know until someone calls you and says, how did you vote on that? So I'm, I'm a dialogue.
Here, that's a quasi judicial land use action that does not go to the planning commission. That goes to the hearing examiner, who is the recommending body and then to council. So again, there are just separations in the duties and it's, I will say. Hard, would be hard for my staff, not impossible, but we do. Over a thousand building permits and several hundred land use permits every year. And those are available on our website. So really, it's, we can train you on where to. Give people the power to find out that information, but I don't think it's up to my staff to bring every project action.
I, I, I'm not asking for every project for us. I'm not asking for every project, but there are some that get higher visibility than others.
Maybe there's a threshold that we could. Have.
Again, that makes me really nervous, just from a process point of view. That again, we can provide the education on how to get people that information. But again, I, I get nervous when we start mixing up roles and responsibilities of the process.
Then, then maybe. And to Commissioner Packard's. Question. We have to define exactly what we want to ask. And exactly what we want back. And I'm trying to put myself in the shoes of, I'm using the example of the people that attended these meetings. They don't know. They don't know to go to the website. If they get there, they don't know where to find it. The frustration level was obvious. So what do we do as a body? To unite with a council? So that. That. Combination of rumor and innuendo doesn't happen again. What questions can we ask of council to unite in a way that doesn't merit, that doesn't mix up our roles? But I'll ask you, what do we ask? For and from to make sure that that doesn't happen again?
Again, I think it's, what I'm hearing is you're, you want a flow of information. And there are different ways that we can do that. There are different tools that are out there. I think what you're asking of your, your council liaison, and this is something. The council would have to weigh in on, and I'll let Ryan, you know, directly speak to this, but. I think we could add an agenda item, which is. You know, five minutes from your liaison, you know, as we go through your planning commission reports, department reports, we could definitely add in a city council report. That is something the council had discussed a few years ago, and I think they. Decided not to do that at a certain point, but I think that's still a reasonable request for a flow of information. And again, that would be directly in line with the projects that you've agreed on, that you're working on. The council themselves, I don't think would. May or may not have the ability to speak to quasi judicial projects. I mean, again, that's following a totally different pathway. There are legal repercussions of, you know, inserting yourself in that. That's why I'm a little bit hesitant that we. Use this as another forum for that, but for your land use, your code. Recommendations, your comp plan recommendations, as we look at housing, environmental topics, all of those things, that's absolutely appropriate. That, you know, you could ask for feedback directly from your liaison if they want to take five minutes and say, yep, we talked about this. These were the high points. These are where we agreed with you. These are the points, maybe we differed with you. And I think that's something we can easily do if that's what you're asking for. Otherwise, I think we can do as a staff, we can set aside. A meeting is sort of a, a training session for you on how you can help people access land use permits. How you can help people navigate our websites. You know, I think all of those tools are, are there. It's just people have to use them, or you can direct them to staff, which is even more appropriate. To the experts and the project managers who can really help answer those questions.
And I would just note on the educational component of this and potentially having a meeting, I think there's also. We have a couple of newer commissioners and a very new commissioner. And, you know, there, it might warrant, you know, whether it's during a meeting or whether that training, like a planning 101 through. American Planning Association or through some other organization. Just to provide some of the context and some of the history as far as. You know, why cities went away from planning commissions considering quasi judicial applications and why their role is primarily. An advisory role now on legislative amendments, so comp plan amendments and development code amendments. And kind of the difference between a major rezone, like rezoning parts of 20th as part of the comp plan. Versus a site specific, which goes to the hearing examiner for a very prescriptive set of approval criteria. That then goes to city council for final approval. So I think that that's something. That we can do as well, especially for new commissioners that haven't gone through this very much and. You know, it's all new to them. And so I think there is some opportunity for some training. We, we do these trainings even for new planners, especially for new out of state planners. They come in, they need to learn. The Washington, you know, legislative framework for land use planning. And so I think there might be some value to that as well.
Yeah, I think I'd love the training. Yeah, I, I think, yeah, training would be great. And if we have any spare time in any of our meetings, that'd be great, because. Most people do not speak Levitanian. We need to.
It's an ancient dialect.
But I think one of the things that would probably come in handy here, because it would be. Just a brief, we'll call it a lecture on the scope and authority of the planning commission itself. I understand, I understand, you know. David Levitan's suggestion of coming and speaking about why we went away from direct action of planning commission, but. Finding where are the lines? Because what I'm, what I'm hearing in our discussion is very much good intentions, but perhaps beyond the scope of, of what we're by. Lake Stevens, is it Articles of Incorporation, Municipal Code? What, what the scope of our authority actually is. And I hate to be spinning our wheels on that. Knowledge is good, being able to give that information to the public when they ask, wonderful. But as we sit here as, as a body, you know, let's know where that line is and what, what point we have to turn that over to. To the council. And where we have to stop, because otherwise. We're going to spend 20 minutes on something that's beyond our authority.
I appreciate that, but I would also like to see what circles back on that from council. Just out of respect for our volunteer time. I want to make sure that we're discussing something and sending it to them, whether it's adopted or not, that we're seeing the, we're getting the feedback from that. Without having to sit through city council meeting. I, I sit in a lot of them, but I don't sit in them all. And this is my volunteer time.
I, I hundred percent agree with that, but I also am hearing things about what's going on in public works. You know, things that. You know, what, what, what is going on with the, with the particular development in the street? You know, why is there a construction crew over there putting pipe in the ground? Okay, that's good to know, but it's kind of beyond our scope here, I feel.
Okay. So what are we boiling it down to? What do we want to talk to them about in two weeks?
To my mind, you know, we have a. List of tasks or topics we'd like to accomplish ahead of us. There seems to be a. Prioritization. Some of those things are prioritized based on legislative deadlines that are in front of us. I'd like to hear what priorities of council are. And see if those are in line with where we feel we are as a body. We've had instances where. We have gone in two different paths between what this planning commission believes are the priorities of, of the community. And where council believe those priorities are. And I think having a frank discussion, preferably one that's, we'll say moderated. Because I know last time we sat there and everybody was kind of staring at each other, waiting who's going to speak first. It would be good to, to have an understanding. So we, so we are. Spending our time wisely.
Agreed. Commissioner Packard, you need to leave soon. What would you like to see?
I don't know, I'll be honest. I was looking for this body, right, to have some conversation. I, I agreed with, again, the things that you had proposed. I'm just, again, curious how it actually. Executes and what that looks like. And, and I, I don't have a good answer for you. I'm sorry.
If I could make a suggestion, I do think based on Dave's conversation and Commissioner Dewar. Is that I would take a look at your priority schedule in front of you this evening and make sure that you all, the planning commissioners are in agreement with that schedule. And if not, determine what was proposed by the survey that went out. Is that satisfactory? Are you unified in that approach? Or would you like to see something different?
I'm happy with the schedule, and I think the, the topics that we brought up in our, our survey responses are very appropriate for what we'd like to discuss. So I think that's, that's a good foundation for what we can.
Is the survey being shared with council?
That would be the intent, yeah.
Yeah, we would, we would share that similar to the materials that were in here. And just to provide a little bit, especially for the newer commissioners, so. The planning commission typically, as part of, sorry, the city council is part of the consent agenda typically after the joint meeting. With planning commission then approves. The long range work program for that year. So there still is opportunities, you know, coming out of that joint meeting if. If there are priorities or additional topics, or it shows, you know, there are additional topic areas. That want to focus on this year, there, there are still opportunities to refine the work program. Before they adopt that on the consent calendar via resolution. And so there is some opportunity to do that. It's a pretty ambitious one, as it is every year. And there's just a lot of things that we're required to accomplish in 2025. So it's not like you're lacking for work, but just wanted to provide that context.
If I could make one suggestion, then knowing that there are some things that are hard deadlines based on legislation. And knowing that generally in the summer, we tend to skip some meetings and that as we experienced, I don't think we've met since November. That we perhaps prioritize those time sensitive items. So that we can get those out of the way and not have them breathing down our neck.
I would follow that up by the biggest impact to the community, what affects. The largest group of people. As our newest commissioner, would you like to join into the discussion?
So I'm looking at this and a lot of these things, I still need clarity and definitions on what they truly are. So I think that was a follow up item that I was going to get together with you, Russ, on and just make sure that, that I've got some background in history and. Can participate better than you will.
That's great. So I've, I've heard two really distinct actionable items coming out of this discussion.
Can I make sure that we don't have any other discussion over here?
Yeah, really just. I mean, you know, it's belaboring it, but they're. They're, and I get that. It may, it might be capital projects, or I'm sorry, public works projects. The one that always catches me off since my, my time on the planning commission was when. We showed up and we found out that the, the property, the city property off of. Chapel Hill Road is being auctioned, that, you know, the, the city had spent effectively a year. Planning that to be a, the public, you know, the civic building. And we show up and everybody's caught off guard where that's being auctioned off. That was one of the most alarming things that I've seen happen within the city ever. It's, I've been here for six, seven short years. But that's the kind of transparency that I think has been really missing. And was like, we were aghast and we were kind of uniform in our pretty ardent opposition to that process and how that unfolded. That didn't change anything, but that's the kind of. Lack of transparency that. I think on really big picture things that, that Commissioner Huxford's, Chair Huxford is, is really trying to relate. Where it's, it's really kind of like a show of disrespect, given the prominence of that project. And the lack of respect to planning commission and that the, all the effort that the city went into, how it was being pitched to the, the community. This was supposed to be a Snowhalls Library slash Civic Center, and then rug removed. That was pretty alarming. Those are the types of things that I would like for us to be privy to. Really just like, and I know that there's so much gray area, Russ, but that's one that was just kind of a gut punch. And I just want to make sure that that never happens again. I would, I would, I know we can't assure that, but that's the kind of thing that I would like to see addressed.
Okay, no, I, I, I hear that. And we can think of how to communicate some of those, but again, it's drawing. That line, you know, again, on the, the, the financial responsibilities of the council versus the. Land use recommendations. So, yeah, I mean, we can.
That's just a really, that was a pretty considerable one. And especially how that was being handled, who it was going to be sold to an auction. And there's a lot of, yeah.
I don't, I don't even know if it was discussed that much at the city council. I don't remember seeing it on the agenda. As an agenda item of, of. You know, changing, you know, selling that piece of property.
Yeah.
If there was, I would have shown up, but.
I think a lot of people would have shown up.
So it's, those types of things where it's like that are. When big changes are made without notice and it's, and a war discussion and kind of indicates. Those are things that, that didn't want to have discussion in the first place. And, and that may, that may not be right. That may not be correct on, but it looks that way.
And, and I hear you. Again, I can just point back to what the defined roles are and, and council's responsibility is budgetary. And to make those decisions.
Yeah.
So it may not come in front of this body. Because you don't really have. A role, but I, I understand how you would like the flow of information. And so let us think about. What that could look like. It may be just as simple as we bring and pass out for your information, the last city council's meeting minutes or something like that to keep you. Informed of, of greater city topics. So let us think about that a little.
So maybe more in general, and what we can ask in our combined meeting in a couple of weeks is basically to ask the city council. That we be, we'd be more willing to take on more of that advisory roles in more areas that are adjacent to. Land use and such, and that, and it would be their decision, of course, but. We'd be more open to those, those types of discussions so we can give them more feedback. I don't know. As an advisory panel.
And we're definitely a staff looking for different ways to convey information through different formats. You know, the last couple of years have been trying to provide more and more hyperlinks to council staff reports to the planning commission and vice versa. The YouTube video links, just so it's easy, so you don't have to go searching for it. Have gotten, you know, positive feedback from the city council on that, that they are able to. You know, jump straight to your, the video of your discussions of these items. And it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to agree with, you know, the recommendation in full, but it at least. You know, it's a lot easier the last few years, and especially since the shift to YouTube. To provide those direct video links and. Yeah, the 20, what was that? I guess the 2022 docket, that was a, it was a pretty unique one, but I can understand the frustration from planning commission. As Russ noted, the city council obviously needs to be concerned about the budget. And it was one of those things that once it was decided that that wasn't where the city civic center was going to be. But we still needed money to pay for a civic center elsewhere. It wasn't maybe so feasible from the city council perspective to turn that into a park. And they, you know, obviously they need to make difficult decisions when it comes to city finances. And so. It maybe wasn't entirely in line with a lot of the feedback that we had received during the planning commission public hearing for that comp plan docket. But that again is, I mean, I think that's a great example of the discussion and really identifying those roles and expressing your concerns and then providing their perspective as well.
Can I just ask logistically, are you going to moderate the meeting, Russ?
Yeah, I certainly can.
Okay. If there are questions that we want asked specifically prior to that meeting, we're to direct them directly to you?
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine. And. Yeah, if there are. Additional questions, I guess what I was going to suggest earlier, as I've heard really two. Actionable items, you know, the, the first is, how do we increase? The communication, you know, what, what does that look like? And that's taken a few different. Turns tonight, but I think the, the biggest one is just the interflow between your liaison and council. And then the information flow back. The other pieces of information, we'll make sure that we come up with a strategy to. Educate you on how to help answer those questions of constituents, or setting that aside, that's sort of one item. The second one, I think really important is Commissioner Dewar was talking about, is let's. Ask council also their priorities for the projects. I mean, you've already seen as it's laid out, that was kind of staff's priority. Sort of looking at not just what's important to the largest amount of people, which. Is actually the one we're probably tackling first, the transportation code update. But then there are the ones with statutory deadlines that we know are both two huge projects and for staff management. One's the beginning of the year, one's at the end of the year, with sort of the other stuff in the middle. So there's also on our part, how do we manage the, the limited staff resources? That we have to do these projects and still do everything else we're responsible for. So anyway, I think though. The prioritization is good. One thing I've also would like us to start doing sort of akin to this survey. Before we launch into new topic areas, I think we could start doing additional surveys with the planning commission. You know, when we talk about traffic, what are the five things about traffic in the city that are most important to you? You know, where should we reflect on our code? And that really helps you bring in those greater voices with the process code. I see that. I see that it scored very low on everybody's, um, sort of list. But for us, it's like, oh man, we, we have to do it. It's not sexy, but it's, it's, uh, we have to do it. And we all know from the list that housing is at the top. And we definitely want to engage the, the planet commission as we've done the last several years with housing. And are we doing enough? And I think where we've sort of ended those discussions is we need to do more sort of direct intervention at this point, not just pass the regulation. So we'll be trying to get your feedback early before we develop that formal scope of work. And maybe that's another point of topic that if we do that with you and the council, then you can sort of compare notes and that will help us define, you know, what we're, we're sort of bringing you. But those are the two that I think of the list that are really important. I think generally you could start out with some easy feedback that generally everybody was pretty happy with the comp plan process. Really didn't see a lot of, um, suggestions for improvement other than the one that we always hear, which is what do we do to get more public engagement? Which, you know, we continue to try new things, new technologies. And I think in the coming year with some new technologies, we're going to start using, we might have some other opportunities. So we'll continue to work on that. But that's been the history of public involvement. As long as I've been doing this is how do you engage folks? So those are really sort of three big things I think to talk about. I think that it's okay if we make council aware that you are interested in what's going on with capital projects, that you're interested and passionate about the UGA expansions and some of the other topics, sidewalks. And a lot of the, the council, they already know those topics as well. So I, I think there's sort of a good game plan going in. And if you have additional questions, I think we can definitely pose them. But my goal would be to pose no more than four or five sort of questions to council, just so it's, um, manageable for them, manageable for you. And you can really focus and have some substantive conversation. And if you're all in agreement, that's okay.
Can we do anything about fees? What is on the city council's agenda for 2025 that includes fees being passed along to constituents?
Again, I think that that's council's sole responsibility as a private citizen.
It is.
You can make those comments.
Okay. There, I, I just, again, I want to make sure that we're being responsible in our, in our role, but also educated as much as possible as what might be heading, both as, as people who live in the city and people who are representatives in between the city community and city council.
Good.
If I may, uh, let's go to commissioner reports and let's start with you, Commissioner Packard.
I don't have anything for today. Sorry, I asked more questions than provided answers, but, uh, I think we're in a better position towards that meeting next week. So thank you for the time.
I'll look forward to many questions from you in between then and now.
I will do my best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Commissioner Dewar.
Just that it's good to be back doing planning commission work and welcome Commissioner Matt to the commission.
Thank you.
Uh, I have nothing.
I have nothing, um, but thank you for welcoming me and having me join. This is great.
We look forward to having you, Commissioner Davis.
Yep, I've got nothing but, uh, welcome Commissioner Matts. Congratulations.
And I just want to say that I appreciate you in running these meetings. That was a heavy lift last year. And you did it well and with a smile. So I appreciate you setting the bar high. Director reports.
We are getting close to getting our 2024, um, department report completed. So that's what we've been working on. Everybody's working on different aspects of that. We'll definitely share that with you. And that does cover a wide variety of topics. The Snohomish County Tomorrow Annual Banquet had just occurred a couple of weeks ago. I attended that with the mayor. And the focus of SCT might be changing a little bit in the future. And we're going to be creating, um, an exploratory committee to tackle some of the issues you're talking about tonight. How does that board create better communication between all of its various divisions? Are there other topical areas that are appropriate for that board to also be looking at? So that'll be a big workload over the next year. And as I mentioned, new technology, we are starting to explore how to integrate artificial intelligence into our workflows. So we're going to start slow on that, um, but start seeing if that's a tool we can use to increase our, our productivity. Those are a few things that are, are going on right now.
Excellent. Do we have anything else for the greater good?
A move that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. Happy New Year.